Thank you. I'll go ahead and call the teams in order if everyone stands please for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All of the commissioners are present this evening, which takes us to the first item, the adoption of the agenda.
I approve adoption of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Thank you, Mr. Light. Any, if there's any further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of the minutes. I did kind of wonder, were we really done at 7:40?
Yeah.
On August 16?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do I have any changes or motion in regards to the minutes?
I approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor, please say aye. If there's any discussion, aye. That takes us to the first public hearing of the evening, the Sheffield accessory dwelling unit. If I could just do a little bit of housekeeping right now, how many people are here for the accessory dwelling unit to speak on that? One. How many people are here for the all-day tourist home? Two. How many people are here for the wines application? All right. And for the Blue Rock Inn application? Okay. I would just ask maybe if everyone could keep their comments to five minutes or less so we can make sure everyone has a chance to be heard. That would be most appreciated since there's obviously a lot of interest in this on the agenda this evening. That takes us to the first special exception of the evening, 230901 of the Sheffield accessory dwelling unit. Ms. Summers, would you like to do that for us, please?
Sure. Date and Donna Sheffield, owners of tax map number 4312A60 Sheffield Lane, have requested a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit pursuant to 17036A and 17062G. The property is 23.37 acres in size and is zoned agricultural. It is proposed to construct a single-family dwelling of 1,200 square feet for their son and his family to reside in within 200 feet of their residence. VDOT commented that they have no objections to this request. The Health Department commented they do not see any potential issues with this proposal. They will just simply need to obtain a well-inseptic permit, and there are no proposed staff conditions associated with this application, and the applicants are present.
Thank you. Mr. Sheffield?
Yes.
Would you have anything to add at this time?
Um, no, nothing.
If you don't mind using your phone.
I'm sorry.
No, nothing at this time. It's like you said, it's for our sons who's growing this family, and he currently living in an 800-square-foot house up on Blue Mountain Road, and since he's on one day in here at this land, we thought he'd just be right back if he had a house, and he'll live on it when that time comes. And I've already, you know, I'm talking about the well-inseptic, I've already spoken with Holden, so consultants and one of them. I've been on the same 57 years of that, I've helped with that tillage and tarmac for 15s. I know what the soil type is, and I have no doubt that's going to turn the curve, and talking with this person, Holden, the representative with the two, they've been totally agreeing on with that.
That's good. We'll definitely revisit if we have any questions for you after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the Sheffield accessory dwelling unit. If anyone is here to speak on that, please approach the microphone and state your name and the district in which you reside, and make your comments. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Ms. Atkins, this is in your district, would you like to start this conversation or defer?
Sure. I think this is a good fit. They're trying to, you know, build a house for their sons to be able to come and live on the property. Great sound of Mr. Sheffield, who's laid up and told, has talked it for many years. So, my personal thing, this is a good fit.
Ms. Atkins, anyone else? Ms. Charlie?
I would just say I agree with the sentiment, it seems like this is very consistent with the way of speaking on, you know, the revisions around accessory dwelling units. We're not requiring a family use at this point, but the scale and orientation, it seems like, and the property doesn't seem to be disruptive to the surrounding agreement, so I tend to agree, seems like a good application.
Does anyone have anything additional to add?
Well, I'm always happy to hear about a child wanting to live near the parents. Good for you.
I would just add that my sentiment is similar to Mr. Light's, that we have sort of taken a check, the boxes approached to this, and within the proximity of the house and the shared access, and 1,240 or less certainly marks through the boxes that we will expect to see on this sort of application, so I do think it is a good application. Did you want to make a motion in regards to this application, Ms. Atkins?
I'd like to make a motion that we would approve this applicant, request, and heading on to the board of supervisors. I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Atkins, and Ms. Light, we have a motion to recommend approval for this application to the board of supervisors. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to go ahead and move this up to the board with the recommendation for approval, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to go.
Same to you. You can get that for our little ones at home.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the second item on the agenda tonight, special exception, 230902, the all-day tourist home. Could you introduce that for us, Commissioner?
Ron Alday, owner of tax map number 2334C, 510 Marges Mountain Lane, has requested a special exception to operate a tourist home pursuant to 17036E and 17066K. The home has been used as a tourist home in violation of not per se obtaining a permit to operate. The current road, Marges Mountain, does not meet type-two road standards per 17066K6. Access to Marges Mountain Lane does cross an earth and dam, and to get to this lane, access is through the Rapidly Anika Lake subdivision. Mr. Alday has been made aware of the road standards, and he has obtained quotes to bring the road up to the standards if approved and conditioned upon. The Health Department commented that the existing dwelling is approved for a one-bedroom sewage disposal system. VDOT had no objections to this request since it's a private lane. If the planning commission would recommend approval, staff proposes the following conditions for this application: a maximum of two guests, one bedroom, no food service to be offered to the renters, permit terminated upon sale or transfer of the property, property may not be subleased, rent by third party or used as a timeshare, and that the road must be upgraded to be type-two road standard prior to issuance of the permit, adhering to all local and state regulations concerning the dam, and the applicant is present.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. If the applicant would like to say a few things at this time, you're welcome to approach the microphone and make your comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ryan, and I put the application in there. I'm a veteran retired firefighter, and this was my primary residence until my son's mother and I separated, and that kind of forced me to move back closer to where she was, and it kind of put me in the awkward situation of trying to sell the home or turning it into a short-term rental. So I'm trying to go down the short-term rental route. We spoke about, we spoke about the road being not a type-two standard. I wanted to see if I could request to maybe possibly have a consideration for having that waived. The road is just a gravel road, and it only services my home and one other property. There's no other properties on that road, so it's just a back road that goes there. And the quotes for bringing that road up to standard is $50,000 to $70,000. And that's extremely outside of my budget there. So I would just ask for a special consideration on the road standard. We maintain the road personally, myself maintains it, and I maintain it for my neighborhood. There's only the two of us there, there's no other homes on the road, and that's just my request to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We may follow up with additional questions or comments later.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. And at this point, then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the all-day tourist home. If you have comments to make on that application, please approach the microphone and state your name and the district in which you reside. Anyone wishing to speak?
They're making me go first.
Somebody's got to.
Somebody has to. First one out the door, it's all yours, right? My name's Mark Reinhardt. I live in Jackson District in Rapidly Lakes, and my property borders the road in question for about 450 feet. I live in between the entrance of the neighborhood and the lake. And so I think there's some big, big problems with this application, so I'll try to go over them quickly. First one being that the applicant has operated without a permit for multiple years now, and it's advertised, currently advertised as a 15 occupancy, person occupancy, with four bedrooms and seven beds. And it's currently on Airbnb right now, that I could book a room right now for 15 people, if I hit this confirm and pay button, I can book a room standing right here. So it's still operating, even though after being notified that a permit was necessary. So I think that's a big problem. Also, it's been notified that the roads are not up to standards, and that a lot of construction life can be done for the roads. A big part of that, with the proposals that were received, is for the construction, is altering the spillway. This is a six-acre lake that's probably about 20 to 30 feet deep, and the dam is, we estimate, probably 25 to over 30 feet high on the low side, on the backside of it. So this puts in the standards requiring a junior department conservation and recreation permit for it. Also, the way the proposal was structured, to put a 40-foot by 3-foot pipe where there's a flat overrun spillway now, would severely alter the character of the spillway, it would alter the level of the lake. It would be potentially disastrous if this project didn't go well, and I believe that in the staff report copy I had, it says that a TCR permit would be needed for this. And to pass the construction, there could be other issues that come up too. So really, a question that comes up is who, who's going to warranty this work? It affects all of us. It's not his dam, it's not his lake. It's the centerpiece of our neighborhood. It's a huge ecological preserve. We can see great blue herons, bald eagles, hawks, kestrels, all manner of migratory waterfowl, and all the flora and fauna that go along with that. Even the project went perfectly, it would really alter its ecosystem and have a negative impact on the environment, and certainly on the neighborhood and our enjoyment of the neighborhood. So that's a big impact, and we have serious concerns about that. And who's going to warranty the work if he sells the property, you know, a couple of years down the road, and the lake drains out because of this construction? Who's liable for that? So, we get to experience the problem, but, you know, potentially there's no one there to remedy the issue. So that's a huge concern. It has a major negative impact for us. And so, you know, on the notion of impact, I was happy to see the comprehensive plan principle seven in the staff report, which talks about promoting only economic growth that assists in maintaining our existing balance and is compatible with the environmental quality and rural character, and does not adversely affect active farm operations, forestry operations, residential neighborhoods, the tourist industry, and the county's fiscal stability. I mean, one house isn't going to plus or minus affect the tourist industry, but it's definitely going to affect our residential neighborhood. We've already had an impact from the traffic that goes back and forth. We've seen maximum capacity number of cars going up to the house over the years. I've had to pull a fellow out of the spillway, he got stuck. It's very narrow in the east, and he hadn't veered left and drove right in the spillway, and fortunately I was able to pull him out with my S and B, but if he had veered right, he would have ended up in the lake. And I can't do free-toe service, I'm not qualified for water rescues, I mean, why is this even a question? So there's no signage down there, nothing has been done, even with the current situation, to improve the safety or prevent this type of thing from happening. So I feel like the dam, you know, really is a major issue with this. So, back to principle seven, under policies, number 7D there, says encourage low-impact tourist housing. I feel like this is very high impact if we have to potentially destroy a dam, create huge environmental problems. You know, even the project goes perfectly, there's how many fish, moles, and everything are going to be affected by this. So those are huge concerns, and it doesn't benefit the people who have that amenity, and it's not his dam. So that's a couple of big problems I see. Another problem I see is just the road situation in general. Now, if we backed up a little bit to what's always in the intro paragraph of every application, it's the standards for tourist homes to get a special exception permit, and that's 17066K. And number six, as Ms. Summers mentioned, is the road standards. And it says, "Private roads serving tourist homes shall meet the standards for type-two roads as specified in 1786, 1787, and chapter 147." So that's one, two, three places where the criteria states they have to be met in order to issue a permit. 147 is the construction standard. We're talking about that.
I think in the interest of fairness, your climate sort of wound down.
Right.
If you wrap it up, it's just about stopped, that would be great.
Thank you. I'll wrap this up, but just to elaborate, the standard for tourist homes, 1766K, number six, has to adhere to three different standards. 147 is the construction standard. We talked about that. 1786 and 87 are the density standards. We need to talk about that too. 86 says a minimum density of one house per 25 acres. We don't have that here by far. 87 says minimum, I mean, sorry, a maximum of five lots. It defines a type-two road as serving no more than five parcels. We don't have that here. So, to meet the road standards for a tourist home, it has to meet 1786, 1787, and 147. It's not just the construction standards, it's also the density standards, which is a cornerstone to the zoning in our county. The density standards are what keep us from becoming like Clevenger's Corner. And if we don't uphold those density standards, we're going to look like Clevenger's Corner. So, every tourist home application must meet all three criteria. So with that, I don't think it's legally possible to approve this application, and our president of the board recommends, I mean, this planning commission recommends denial to the board.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this application? Raise your hands.
I'll try to be very quick, because Mark has looked up all this stuff. There's no way our roads meet number 72.
Could you give me your name, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry, Angela Stout. I live on Pine Drive. I'm one of the houses that gets knocked on, and people can't find the place. And our side has a lot of single women, and widows, and older people, and children. And to have a very large military man knock on your door after nine o'clock at night, this is rapid handling. If you don't knock on, you have to stay in the front. Anyways, it's impacting us because these homes, or these Airbnbs, don't have people on site. So those people are having to come to us to find places. It's in the dark, there's no cell phone service, there's probably no internet service where they're at. So they literally have no contact with anyone other than knocking on our doors. The roads, there are a lot of places in our roads you cannot turn around. Two cars cannot pass each other. If an ambulance is coming in and a car is coming out, we have to back up, and sometimes the backing up can be quite a while, okay? You know, there are strips, I'm sure a lot of you have been down through Rapidly Lakes. The other thing is, I think zoning probably needs to get involved. If they have some acreage, acreage, like we do with the building, 25 acres, you can have your Airbnb. But when you're in properties that are a third of an acre big, some are like two-thirds of an acre, but there's not a whole lot of more than an acre housing out there. There are some houses who have up to five, but when you, you don't really have two neighborhoods in the whole county, Chester Gap and Rapidly Lakes, two. We're not Fairfax, we're not Virginia Beach, we're not anything. But when you live this close together in a neighborhood, and you get more and more Airbnbs, there's now four that are going to be coming up, and we're a housing area of 30. I mean, how much, I mean, how long until we're commercial and not residential in the world? And where are the families going to go? Your biggest employer at the county is the school. And I know your attendance has been dropping at the school. If you want families to come, you need to have places that you go. And we only have two neighborhoods. That's it. That's all we have to address. So I think an acreage thing for zoning board, which I know is not you guys.
Just in the interest of fairness, I would ask you to wrap your comments up.
Okay. The spillway, we've talked about. Is there anyone in the county monitoring these Airbnbs? Anybody going on the internet seeing what's going on?
Traditional revenue.
It comes in traditional revenue?
Traditional revenue.
Oh, commissioner revenue. Okay. So somebody is watching this?
Yes, ma'am.
But nobody caught this one?
No, no, probably did, that's why we're here.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, somebody needs to be monitoring it. The lots were too small, were a little bit. How many? I didn't move next to 7-Eleven for a reason, and I am one of them. I didn't want to move next to a hotel either. That's not why I moved to this area, and it's not my reason to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this application?
Okay, there's two. Stand up.
All right, y'all. You need to approach the microphone, have your comments on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Erman, and I live in the lakes, and I agree with my neighbors. I have concerns with not only the density, but also the healthiness of our lakes and the dam. And I am a single person, I am considered one of the olders, so I walk my dogs twice a day, sometimes in the dark. I don't want to be approached by somebody that I don't know. But keeping it short, I agree with what Mr. Reinhardt and Ms. Stout said, and I hope you will look at it very carefully before you recommend it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Amber Lookie, I actually, so live in Rapidly Lakes, on the waterfront. So, one of the things I treated myself after my last deployment was to purchase this house. Wanted to set down roots of Virginia from Texas, and this was, it met all of my check marks. And I would hate to lose the access to the dam because of, or not to the, to the, to the lake because of the issues with the dam and the traffic. I do walk my dogs with Kristy on a regular basis, and have been approached by individuals that have gotten lost trying to find the Airbnb back there. And I have interacted with persons who were on the dam doing activities that you wouldn't normally do in public that were concerning to me based on my prior experiences on working in Rapidly Texas. So I had, I addressed it with them, they moved on their way, but I found out that they were staying at the Airbnb at the time. So I do agree with my neighbors about this approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the all-day tourist home application? If there's no one else wishing to speak, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Yes, sir, you're welcome to make additional comments.
Yes, ma'am. Will I be able to make comments in regards to some of the concerns?
You may make comments now, or you could wait to hear from the commissioners.
I'm not sure the process will be best.
You're welcome to make additional comments now.
All right, well, real quick, I had, I had no idea any of you guys were...
Please address your comments to the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had no idea any of...
State your name.
My name is Amber Alday.
He's the advocate, so I think we all know what his name is. Thank you, though.
Yeah. But I had no idea any of, any of my neighbors felt the way that they, they feel right now, and any of the concerns. As a matter of fact, at least one or two of them, I've had plenty of conversations with my three-year-old son, and no, as we ride around the neighborhood, walk around the neighborhood, we had, I've had no one express any of the things that they expressed here. But I would like to, to address some of the things that they expressed, and I'd like to paint a picture for you guys so you understand kind of the, the situation of the property. So to get to my property, you have to drive a half a mile through the neighborhood that, that these people live in. My property is not a part of the neighborhood, the density issues they're talking about don't apply to my property. Their properties are small, half an acre, one acre maybe. My property's 13 acres on the other side of the lake. You have to, from the last home in this neighborhood to my home and the one other cabin that's on that road, is over half a mile long to get to that. We're very far separated, and if, if most of these people are running into my guests, they're not allowed to be down on the lake. That means they're coming up on the, that means the neighborhood people are coming up onto the private property road to interact with some of, some of the guests. Regardless, a lot of, a lot of concerns on, on the density, and the people, and the trips. And I just looked at some data, because I know a lot of what, what was said was just speculation on numbers. And I looked at the data, and the average home in Virginia has two vehicles. The average trip rate per vehicle is nine to 12 per day. Nine to 12 trips per day. My cabin typically will only be a weekend thing, which means if, if the average home is running two vehicles, they're running 63 trips per week. 63 trips per week. This cabin gets guests on the weekend typically only. So someone's coming to a secluded cabin, most of the time it's a family, they're staying there, they're not making that trip. This cabin as a short-term rental produces less traffic than a normal family would produce if they lived there, because the traffic is only on the weekend, and most of the time when people go to a secluded, this is a small lot. And most of the time when people go to a secluded, this is a small log, 1,400 square foot cabin. Most of the time when people go to a cabin like this, they're staying there. They bring their food. They're building a fire. They're just getting away from the city and enjoying the neighborhood. That's it. They're not allowed to be in this neighborhood. It's directly written that they're not allowed to be in this neighborhood. Airbnb is very strict on no party. They're very strict on screening. The guests, as a matter of fact, Amber, right? Yep, we had a conversation. I wish you would've talked to me and told me you feel the way you feel. We had a conversation. She told me about it. We handled the problem. She spoke to them. I spoke to them. They got kicked off of Airbnb. That guest can't now rent anything through Airbnb because of that. So they're very strict. They take it very seriously. This is my property. I take it very seriously. It's a beautiful property. And that's just on the density. So as a short-term rental, it produces less than half the amount of traffic that a day-to-day family would produce living there. So it's not producing the numbers that these speakers would have to believe. The dam, the dam in the spillway, you have to drive across the dam. I have deeded, I have deeded access through the neighborhood, a half a mile on a road, a half a mile on a road through the neighborhood to get to my cabin and my neighbor. They're a 90-year-old couple. Same thing. They have the deeded access. That issues with the spillway that they're talking about, the car fell off the side of the road. Maybe that happened, but the spillway, if a family lived in that home, that would have to be more traffic on that spillway. And regardless, that spillway needs to be addressed. And the spillway is a responsibility of the neighborhood. No? Who's at the...
I think that maybe we should hear from the commissioners because I don't really want this to get into a back and forth between you and the other residents. I don't think that will be very productive. So I think you may wanna hear from the commissioners and then see if there are additional questions that you can answer.
Yes ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you. Absolutely. Mr. Atkins, in your district, would you like to go first with this application?
Yes, I would. I have quite a few concerns about this application as well. Yes, one is the dam. One, I think, probably more important is that not the amount of traffic necessarily. But you have stated, I've seen, if you're really wanting to rent to people from the DC area. I've worked in the DC area for 35 years. The drivers in the DC area are not drivers like in Rapid Hand County. They're not really safe drivers. So that is a issue. And then these people are coming to this community subdivision. And they're stopping, asking questions. They thought they have a gift to your property. And we just heard that some of these people are elderly people, children, families that are trying to raise families. I have a concern transit people coming to the community of what could happen. And it's not a question if it will happen, it's when it will happen. It will happen. So I definitely have a concern with that. And I think that this does definitely have an impact, adverse impact on this community. So, and then you, I guess you have admitted that you've been renting this out, talking about 15 guests, four-bed rooms, seven beds, with only one and a half bags. What are you gonna do to change now that you're coming in and wanting to get a tourist home, lots, smaller number of people? You're not gonna get that kind of approval from this board. I'm gonna show you that. But, and then also, you allow your guests to operate a fire pit. Is that fire pit outside, near the forest?
No, sir. It's in a big, I'm supposed to...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No, sir. It's just in a big clear area of the yard within a stone fire pit, just like a normal, anyone would have it. Most people in the neighborhood have them in their homes.
Okay. But again, you've got people that are tourists that are really not familiar with that type of fire pit. I see it as a subject to possibility of getting out and causing forest fires in that area. And if a forest fire was to break out in that area, it would be a catastrophe. So I have a concern with that. I guess we could go on and on, but that is some of my concerns here.
Yes, sir. I understand. I just wanted to speak to two of your concerns. I don't market, it's not a direct market to people in DC. I'm not sure how they think about it. It's just marketed to anyone in the public that's looking for a cabin, a cabin in the woods. And most of the time, the people that I communicate with and talk to that want something that disconnected and that rustic, that far away from the city, they understand how to use a wood stove and they understand how to make a campfire. No different than going to a national park. We don't close off the national parks to people from DC or from any city to speculate that they can't make a campfire.
But we also do have, we have forest fires in the park too, don't we? And how does that get charged? It's from these people that are tourists creating that. It's not the local. It's people in the community.
Yeah, or is that a speculation, sir, or are those facts that you're speaking? Because I, I mean, I was a firefighter for a number of years, so I know how a lot of fires get started. And I take the precautions. There's fire extinguishers there. So I mean, I don't wanna get into the weeds on all that. I take as much precaution as a professional firefighter would take with a fire pit on this property, sir.
Mr. Seid?
Couple of questions, obviously, to address. Regardless if you rented it or you were there yourself, you have, as you said, you have a right of way to go back and forth, so that traffic's gonna be there. The issue, the concern I have is the amount of people. If you are in fact advertising for 10, I think that's way exceeds what normal traffic would be. I really couldn't get behind anything greater than probably the one-bedroom, two people, one-bedroom piece. But, I mean, the bottom line is we had, whether you, Airbnb or you live there, you have the access, you have a right of way, so you can go back and forth. So I understand the concerns about the spillway and everything. And while you, if you were living there full-time, you would understand more about the particulars of the road as opposed to someone else coming in.
Yes, sir.
But I, for me, right now, the most I could consider would be that one-bedroom, two people.
Yes, sir. I understand. Just to clarify the numbers, I put that there because sometimes there are families that have a lot of kids that come in and they wanna put tents up and around the yard or the property and stuff like that. So that's perfectly reasonable. The standard, the standard is typically a husband and a wife and one or two children that are there. So I'm perfectly okay with that.
That was, that's the one concern I have. But some of the other stuff has been addressed and some of the stuff is not gonna be able to be addressed. So defer to someone else, one of my fellow commissioners.
Mr. Henry, did you wanna go next?
Sure. This appears to be located on at least two rightaways, if not three rightaways, off of State Road. A rightaway number one that comes to Rapid Hand Lakes, right away down to the intersection there at Putman Lane and then up to your property, appears to be one. And then the third one up to your property itself. So, and the survey in your package may not mention of the width of the rightaway. And I don't know what in-depth title review would show of the access into your property. And I think Rapid Hand Lakes was approved as a subdivision. Well, it became a subdivision. I don't think we had zoned it back in, I think, 1956. And I don't know whether there was a, an old state road that was part of the BUR Act that was the Putman River or what. But the end result is, I went down there today and there's been talk in the county of making our process of a tourist home basically an administrative process. And that hasn't gone too far. The zoning department will check some of that block and give it permanent. But if there's any example of why we shouldn't do that procedure, it's your application. In my tenure here, I've never seen a tourist home as difficult to access as yours. The spillway, when I got to that this morning, holy moly. How could a million-dollar fire truck get across this spillway today? How could, if you had a two or three alarm fire, how would any vehicles get up there? I think at the best, you could get a brush truck up there. I stopped and measured that road in places and it turned out to be basically eight feet, maybe nine feet if I was for a local. So, you know, in terms of accessing your property if there was an emergency with any type of vehicles and with multiple vehicles, you know, the property were burned down, it would melt, people could not get in and out, a tanker truck could not get up there. So, and we've never waived road standards, so we're not gonna start, I don't think, tonight. So I think the end result is that this application, there's no way that we can approve this application. And I think simply the road here is the killer and it can't go any fluffier than this. So I think that's the end result. We can talk about one bedroom, we can talk about two people, we can talk about all these things. It comes down to that it does not meet the road standards. We're not gonna waive that. It's a purpose that we did it in safety and welfare and not only the people there, but of the community. So we're not gonna go anyplace, I don't think, with this tonight.
Yes, sir. I understand. I actually spoke with the chief or the captain of the fire department, local fire department there, about what vehicles they are able to get to the property. And like I said, my elderly neighbors there, they typically have ambulance there once a quarter to help them out. So they can get a fire apparatus, suppression apparatus up there. They can get ambulances up there because they get the ambulance there on a regular basis. But I do, I do agree that a full-size fire engine cannot make it up there. And my question...
We're not gonna waive anything, so don't...
Understood.
I don't know that we have the authority. Yeah, we don't, we don't, nothing.
Understood. Yes, sir.
We can talk about this all night, but I think it's dead on wrong because it's...
Yes, sir.
Would you have any...
I was just going to add that I see no authority of ours. Sometimes if we have authority to waive something, it's written in. If there's nothing written in, it gives us the authority. I mean, there was a lot of discussion. This road standard was, you know, not in place. In some ways, you would probably have been better served if you'd gotten the permit under, you know, before that standard was in place. But as it stands now, there was a lot of thought and consideration. And this kind of situation with difficult access of emergency vehicles in remote areas was one of the reasons that we adopted that standard. And I don't think we reserved the right to waive it.
Understood.
I would just want to add that I pulled up your listing while Mr. Reinhardt was speaking and it appears you are renting bedrooms without windows.
That's incorrect.
It looks like two or one or two of the sleeping rooms have no bedrooms and are all paneling.
That's incorrect. Every room that has a bed has windows and an entrance and an exit door.
Okay.
But just to speak on that, when Ms. Summers notified me of the...
There's not really any further comment necessary?
Not the one that's... When she notified me of the Violet. Because when I moved out and rented it, I had no idea that there was a special application package. So when I was notified by Michelle, I switched it over to a minimum of a 30-day rental so it doesn't fall under the short term. So I would be in compliance until this process was over. So that's why you can still see it there because it should have a 30-day minimum rental on it.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Seid?
One of the issues in the county is a lack of rental housing. And if you thought you might be able to get out of the financial situation by renting the house on a more long-term basis.
Thank you.
Mr. Shulman?
I have actually nothing to add.
My only additional comment would be to the folks that live in Rapid Hand Lakes. You all have an HOA. Our recommendation to you on previous occasions has been, if you don't want Airbnbs in your community, put it in your HOA rules.
We have, we're still working on it.
Okay. I can conise to be my recommendation to you. All right, Mr. Atkins, do you have a motion in to revise this application?
Yes, I recommend that we deny this action based upon one, that does not meet the road standards. And also say it does have an adverse impact on the neighborhood.
All right. So we have a motion for denial to the forest supervisors for those two reasons. Are there any other items for discussion or second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Any further discussion?
I think we should narrow it to absolutely the road standards. Because the included impact is, to what impacts, none of many, you know, specific impacts are vague, but the road standards are very precise.
And we could if we were concerned about, I mean, I think the fire concern is a significant one, but in other cases, we have, as the condition said, no outside fires. So there are other ways to address some of those. So, you know, I defer to Mr. Atkins if he wants to revise the amendment. But I do agree. It seems to me that when we have one somewhat general concern and one very specific non-compliant issue, we're probably on safer ground to sticking to the one that's the compliant issue.
Okay. I'll agree to revise the motion.
All right, we have an amendment to the motion and your second's still in place, Mr. Light. All right. Any further discussion? All votes in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us, and of course, you're all welcome to stay.
You might also, you might also, as mentioned to the applicant, ours is just a recommendation to the forest supervisors. So you're, they don't have to conform to our recommendation.
Yes, sir. Just to clarify, your recommendation that if I brought the road up to standard, then...
Well, our recommendation is to recommend denial based on the road not applying. If you change something and you get something worked out, you'll come back to us and we'll have, you know, presumably you'll come back with another application and we would consider it. And I think there's some limits on that too. I don't wanna give you bad advice. I think you should be prepared to look at the relevant zoning standards. The only reason I kind of disrupted this flow is to, you know, to give you full clarity. Our role is to make a recommendation as an advisory body to the supervisors. They are the body that will make the decision. So I think it would still go to the supervisors.
Unless someone chooses to withdraw it or keep it off the agenda for some reason.
Yeah. So, you know, you do still have that audience if you wish to take advantage of it or pull it with some consideration for what you heard tonight.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to the resigning request for 23063 lines agricultural RR5. Yes, sir?
Thank you. This will be an LLC managed and owned by DeMons. The name's property located in Fulton Gap, South Detroit, identified by tax count number 2717. The property is 36.105 acres in size with a large portion of its own agricultural and a smaller portion to conservation. It is proposed to resign 7.35 acres of the agricultural portion of the property to RR5, leaving the remaining 28.75 acres as its. There is an existing power line being used as a division line. Given the surrounding uses and the nature of adjoining and adjacent property... Given the surrounding uses and the nature of adjoining and adjacent properties, applicant believes RR5 zoning is the most appropriate zoning designation for the proposed 7.35-acre parcel. The applicant has qualified that the parcel would only be used for single-family residential uses and development, excluding multifamily units and townhomes for this parcel and for their owners and developers to make good faith efforts to comply with the ROEP dark skies. V-Dot has commented that they recommend that the entrance locations for the possible two lots meet their current standards. The health department commented that the permits for private well and subject be obtained. Also, the Fairville Water and Sewer does not extend you this parcel. Staff would also bring to your attention code section 14738 and 17038A6, which read, "Accepting Conservation in Agricultural Zoning Districts." Subdivision of land into less than 25 acres, 25-acre lots may be allowed only where public road railways are 50 feet in width from the property to be divided to a state primary highway. Thornton Gap Church Road is a state secondary road and is a 40-foot roadway, not 50-foot. These code sections relate to the parcel subdivision, not rezoning, which is subject of this application and the required public hearing. Staff has expressed concerns with applicant that the reference code section would preclude further subdivision after a portion of the parcel had a zoning change to something other than agricultural or conservation. Staff also recommended to the commission to review the memorandum posted on the county website regarding maximum density, and the applicant is present tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Did you have anything to add?
Good evening. My name is Dee Wines, and I'm going to read off news just so I can stay focused and hopefully pick on a lot more time tonight. I thought I'd provide a little background about myself before we talk about this application. My name is Dee Wines. As I said, I'm a landscape architect. I was born and raised in Front Royal. I was where my mother and father, they spent their entire lives there, living, working, raising a family. Some of you may recognize my last name. My family done set ties for Rappahannock County, as my grandfather grew up in the area around Hume. I do have distant relatives in Chester Gap. So, this area's always been home to me. The more time we spend in Rappahannock and Sperryville in particular, we understand more and more what makes the area special. I recognize the changes that have come through the years from when I used to come through the area when I was young. I like how much it has evolved over time. I feel the sense of community that can be found in the small towns and villages of Rappahannock County, and as a landscape architect, I'm appreciative of the area and let those people to it. As far as the rezoning application, I worked closely with the zoning staff from the earliest stages, and as you've seen and heard in the summits of that line of presentation, we are currently seeking to reschedule the 23-acre area of property from agriculture to RR5, create a single residential lot while maintaining the balance of the property's agriculture. While proffers are simple and straightforward, but restricted for construction of only a single-family residential home or new parcel and for compliance with the dark sky initiative. I would like to clarify, because there's some confusion, this property, as I understand it, is owned agriculture only. It's not a combination of agriculture and conservation. I realize that the county zoning maps use highlighters to indicate various zoning, which can be confusing. However, per tax records on file, under my knowledge with the county, this property is owned agriculture only. Okay? And with that, I'll step aside and allow the public comments, and I'll have the public comments afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, the resigning request 230603. Anyone that wishes to speak is certainly welcome to approach and make a few comments at this time. Yes, sir?
So, thanks. My name is Mark Constantine. My wife and I, Virginia, reside at 70 Thornton Gap Church Road. And so, we're neighbors as far as the request goes, more or less a quarter mile away. There's absolutely nothing personal in what I'm about to say, so just so we're clear, we would welcome you as neighbors. And, and the qual-, as you already highlighted, the quality of life here is special. The open spaces, the woods, the turkey, the bear, the cattle, the protected water sheds, the mountain and the park, which this property, I'm not sure that it boundaries the park, but it's very close to where the park boundary is. So, you can consider it kind of a buffer zone in that respect. Unfortunately, the exception that you're seeking threatens that quality of life and all, what all of us in this county are determined to protect at all costs. So, I'm advocating that this exception be denied. At its most fundamental, basic, eyes-open level, the applicant bought the property only a little over a year ago of his free will. He knew the zoning restrictions at that time, whether purchasing an investment property or to build his own home. Now, he seeks to change the rules without a compelling case to do so, other than two houses, lots is better than one from an investment standpoint. I'm not accusing you of greed. I'm just saying that's a fact. If you rezone this, you get two houses for one at the moment. But you knew the deal when you bought the property, so now trying to change the rules is, we're out in the open about this. If this exception is granted, what is to prevent, and this is the really crucial point for you as the board, is a host of land speculators purchasing 25-acre-plus lots in Rappahannock County, then coming back to you and seeking to get exceptions to carve it up in one, two, three times or more. It completely defeats the purpose of the whole 25-acre-plus zoning requirements. And so, in that respect, it opens a Pandora's box. And once you say yes to this, you're going to establish a precedent, both legally and in terms of expectations, for other land investors to come in and, and, and change what is now a bucolic nirvana. The applicant, application for the rezoning states there's a 50-foot right-of-way, which I, you know, maybe is an error, but I'm not suggesting it was deliberate, but it suggests there's a 50-foot right-of-way on Thornton Gap Church Road. That is not correct. It is 40-foot, and, and, and the requirement is 50 feet and connecting to a state road. So, by definition, it's disqualified. And so, I appreciate the staff's report, which, you know, a number of us read, which says that this is a quote-unquote "conundrum" in terms of limiting maybe more than the county wants, what can and can't be subdivided. But it is what it is. So, without changing that law, rule, it is what it is. The proffers being offered are nice, but honestly, nothing special. Seeking voluntary compliance with RLAP's dark skies guidelines and we won't build townhouses or multifamily dwellings is nice, but it's not a big deal, frankly. The application states that the remaining acreage, the residual beyond the 7.3-acre zoning request would remain in agriculture and conservation, except that it really wouldn't, because then it becomes another lot to build upon with the requisite land clearance, et cetera. So, so basically, you're, you're building two houses, not one, with this, with this decision, whatever, which, whatever you decide. Finally, the last point I'll make is while the adjoining properties across the street and, and in some cases adjoining on the same side of the street are smaller lots, those have been in place for decades. There has been no change for many decades in this area. We welcome our neighbors, large or small lots, it doesn't matter, nice folks, everybody waves, we're happy people, but please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants me to speak on this application?
Commissioners, my name is Nancy Nord. I live at 147 Thornton Gap Church Road. I did send you, the commissioners, a letter yesterday, and I didn't want to summarize the concerns that I do have as an immediate neighbor to the property in question, our property of butts, this property, the western and southern portion. I guess my overarching concern, and I think it should be the concern of the commission, is that granting a request like this really is in contravention of the comprehensive plan, which makes very, very clear that conserving the agricultural nature of Rappahannock County is a primary objective. It proactively discourages rezoning from agriculture to residential. And indeed, as you know, it says that to do that, it should be done with only, what is the wording, overriding public need or other extenuating circumstances. And I would submit to you that the applicant hasn't given neither of those to you in this application. Basically, all he has said is that there are other properties along Thornton Gap Church Road that are small, and he would like to have a small property, too. Basically, two properties are better to sell than one. Those properties have been in existence, the zoning that they have for years and years, as Mark indicated. I don't think it is really consistent with the comprehensive plan for this commission to press towards more residential conversion, or conversion of resident, agricultural property to residential property. And the comprehensive plan indicates that just the obvious, that really should be your primary concern. I am concerned about the application also giving the impression that because this is just one lot, this small lot, there's going to be very little impact on the surrounding community. Basically, we're talking about two lots. I'm assuming that Mr. Wines is going to be selling both lots, so two houses are going in, two driveways with the corresponding traffic and noise and what the companies of two houses. But what concerns me is that Thornton Gap Church Road is a rural road. It's got at least three different hills on a one and a half mile stretch between Two Eleven and O'Tawa. It's got a number of twists and turns. It has no centerline, and drivers do tend to drift towards the middle of the garden of the gammon. If you are coming down the road and you go up one of those hills and somebody else is cresting the hill, you could be in very big trouble. And I know I've had any number of very close calls, and I think many of the people that live along that road would echo that concern as well. So, thankfully, we haven't had any major accidents, but adding more traffic to that road is not something that is in public interest. Finally, as Mark indicated, there really, if, if you grant this application, there really is a little logic in not granting the next one. Frankly, as I said, we've got 50 acres of butts, Mr. Wines' property. I can think of five acres. I wouldn't mind slicing off and making a little money off. So, I'm not going to do it, but I could if, if you proceed with this application. What is to prevent us from developing and doing the same thing? So, I would just caution you that if, if we do want to respect the 25-acre zoning requirement that we have, let's not make it a guideline. Let's continue to make it a rule and really enforce it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a tac-tacaloski under at 105 Thornton Gap Church Road. I don't have any specifically, anything specifically new to add, what my neighbors, other than what my neighbors have already said. So, my voice is more to echo what they've said, in particular, the concern that there's not a compelling reason to subdivide this property that wouldn't be for any other property on Thornton Gap Church Road or in the county. I would welcome Mr. Wines as a neighbor, but not Mr. Wines and whoever else is subdivided for that. So, I, I urge you to reject the exemption to subdivide the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jane Bolin-Wilson. I live in the Treadmont district of Rappahannock County. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My husband and I bought our property in 1997 after living in the, well, we've been in the county for 42 years. We bought our property because it was rural. We didn't have neighbors. We weren't in a neighborhood. Not that there's anything wrong with neighborhoods and communities, I mean, as a job, communities. However, for our 25 years, it is because what some of the other folks have said, we have turkeys and bears and blue herons, and it's rural. And, and I know that all of you all know that. So, for, for us, looking at the proposal, we own 15.5 acres. We'd like to sell five acres, too. So, the protocols to me are just inconsistent. If we allow this, if we allow seven acres to come off, then that's two houses, then what about the other 27 acres? Why can't we divide those into seven-acre lots? And I understand that we can all own 25 acres. I only own 15 and a half. However, Rappahannock County, the premise is that we respect open spaces and rural landscapes and animals, and we want to drive a little slower, and we want to watch out for our neighbors. And I feel like we do that in our Thornton Gap Church neighborhood. So, I would encourage the commissioners to not approve this special exception for this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Fred Ayers. My wife and I live at 66 Thornton Gap Church Road, quite, maybe a half a mile from the property beyond the discussion. I'm going to echo the comments made before about, says, why are we, why are we initiating a precedent that could apply to numerous properties throughout the county? Why are we doing this? Is there any special reason? And I really can't see it. The only thing I can see is, well, there are a few houses there that have a grandfather that had, it's already a higher density. But the, the thing about that's more, it doesn't make any sense. It cuts the other way. We already have more density than we ideally want. Why should we increase it even more? And then there's the issue of, you have two neighbors close by that have said, hey, you know, I could do that. Why couldn't I do that? And they would come to you and say, hey, you've done it before. And they said, look, there's a house there already, there, on five acres, seven acres. Why can't I have a, sell a house on five, on seven acres? It creates, it's a contagion effect. You put that house there, and then it, it provides a precedent for another house to go over there, and then two houses create another precedent, and you just, you, it can run the other direction, having too many houses. So, I think it's a dangerous, dangerous precedent, and I hope you turn the request down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dabney Kirchman, 67 Thornton Gap Church Road. Whole street is empty right now, probably. Just wanted to ask that. Just couldn't answer that.
There's nobody there.
Let me just say, the point I would like to speak to is the precedent issue. I recommend against you doing this. If you do it, I'm going to be in line next because it would help my families. I would love to be able to subdivide my 25 acres. I would love to be able to put a couple of houses for my daughters. The whole point, though, is if you do this for this gentleman, you need to think about everyone else on that road and everyone else in the county. And if we want to keep our rural character, I just think it sets a terrible precedent and is unwas. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphne.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Kathy Eggers. I live at 66 Thornton Gap Church Road with my husband Fred, who just spoke. We also have a house on Bryan's Road, which goes into Thornton Gap Church Road, so we have an interest in that respect, too. Before my stroke, I just about wore out Thornton Gap Church Road, walking and riding my bike. So it's, it's a, if you haven't been there, it's just a wonderful, modest road with, it's very leafy, with a variety of houses on it, that when I was walking or riding, I would see people walking their dogs or bicycling to, the odd motorcycles, but that's what it's like. And I know we don't want that to change. And I'm also worried about the precedent issue and water, too. Our well occasionally runs dry, and that's not fun. Need to be another user. So thank you for hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I'm Erin Catherine Shee, Tewmont District. It sounds like I'm not the only one to have thought about the presidential concern of this. I would say that in the case of Board of Supervisors of Fairfax County versus Jackson, the Supreme Court of Virginia upheld a decision by the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors to reject a zoning application before them. The court noted that the property in that case was in a stable, long-established neighborhood whose zoning had been in place for years. The court also noted that the zoning in this neighborhood was an appropriate reflection of the character of the neighborhood, as well as land uses that had been in place also for over 20 years. There had been no change in circumstances to make the current zoning designations unreasonable, either for the area or for the parcel in question, even though some lots, like the applications before us, like the application before us, were larger than the minimum acreage allowed in the vicinity. The court finally and importantly accepted the position of the county that to allow this landowner to rezonate part of his lot to a smaller zoning to facilitate creating two built-up lots would set what the court called a dangerous precedent of carving up larger parcels, thereby encouraging re-subdivisions of already developable lots. The concern of setting a precedent, given the established nature of the neighborhood, was inappropriate basis the court held for rejecting the proposed rezoning. The issues here are virtually the same as those analyzed by the Supreme Court in that case. The zoning here has been in place for decades and supports the overall character of this stable, settled area. To grant one landowner the right to carve up his parcel simply because this parcel is larger than the minimum allowance would set, again, what the court had agreed was a dangerous precedent that could ultimately destroy the quality and character of this pleasant wooded setting. As my letter submitted to the commission earlier this morning points out, the zoning on this area, whether conservation, in the area in general, whether conservation, agricultural, or the small enclave are high zoning, is well settled, having been in place for decades. It reflects the overall peaceful rural character of the road and the area in question. The parcel itself is virtually identical to the surrounding parcels in the same zoning categories, and there would be little basis to distinguish a request for these many other parcels rezoned from the facts of the current occupation. The existing zoning, as my letter goes into greater detail, supports important resources in the area. This includes protection of steep slopes, includes protection of the watershed, water tables are high in this very little area, people all rely on wells. I've had my well dry up a little bit when somebody else drilled a well next to it. All of a sudden, my water just already became hard water, and I had to get a water treatment system. So it does happen even with the building of one house. It also serves this area, also serves as a buffer to the Shenandoah National Park, which at its boundary there is a designated wilderness area, one of the largest designated wilderness areas next to an urban center on the east coast. It serves as a shared ecosystem with the park there, as other people mentioned, the wildlife. It's also a very peaceful road, I agree with Mrs. Eggers. Walked that road for years. It's quiet. It's peaceful. The small settled homes there really are part of the rural atmosphere of this county. My letter also goes into greater detail about the elements of the comprehensive plan, which are appropriate to this. I would suggest that the portion of the comprehensive plans that occurred to the development in and around the villages would not apply to this parcel, which sits a mile from the little village of Sperryville. It's surrounded virtually in all size by agriculture or conservation, except for the small block, our five house, which was essentially a circle drawn around all the grandfather blocks that were already there. And I will also say finally that courts have consistently ruled that where the existing zoning is reasonable, even if somebody could make an argument that alternative zoning was also reasonable, the county is fully within its rights to choose the existing zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, if there's no one else that wishes to speak, I'll go ahead. This is public hearing. Would you want to make additional comments at this time, Mr. Weins?
I would, please, yes. First, I'd like to thank everyone for their time tonight and for their comments. I really appreciate them. In response to some of the comments and also just other notes that I have, in terms of the traffic, in 2008, VDOT reported 260 average daily trips per day on Thornton Gap Church Road. For the most recent year reported, since 2021, those trips have reduced down to 150. So the road has, in the past, sustained much higher traffic volumes than it does today. The addition of one house or two houses is not going to severely impact the amount of traffic on the road currently. In terms of potentially subdividing the balance of the property, it wouldn't be possible. It would be 27 and some acres. You couldn't subdivide to R5. The code typically wouldn't allow a subdivision of a large track like that into a smaller lot. I couldn't create five additional lots on this property. It's not going to happen. And I'll continue if I may. We believe that our proposal actually is in line with the comprehensive plan in future uses. As noted in the staff report, it says, quote, "development can be focused in and around major villages consistent with the undeveloped potential of current zoning district designation." Since our current zoning designation is agricultural, in per code section 170-36A, residential lot development is a by-wake use of agricultural zoning, and therefore allowed in order to realize the undeveloped potential of the property. The site is unique in that there are multiple zoning designations within a very short distance of the property. Predominant zoning use on Thornton Gap Church Road, nearly 75%, is some form of residential zoning. Majority of the zoning is either village residential or rural residential R5. Obviously, by the very nature, other zoning designations, such as conservation or agriculture occupiable physical land area, however, only four of 47 lots with Thornton Gap Church Road are represented by these larger land uses. Make no mistake, Thornton Gap Church Road is a residential road, which is why we believe the creation of a residential lot is acceptable in keeping with the rural character of the I would like to note, for the record, the better part of a year and a half, I was told and led to belief by multiple parties that the county sewer system had reached this property. I learned last Friday that in fact it does not. I quickly, I quickly arranged for a soil study.
I ask for everyone to hold their comments because it's really important that if people are respectful when you're speaking, that you separate your kind. Thank you.
Thank you. I quickly arranged for a soil study to be conducted on Saturday. Bryan's will in septic design. Issue the letter on Monday that indicates soils on the site will support septic drainage. I forward this letter in the summer's, and I believe that those copies will be available. The staff report in summary indicates that the layout does support rezoning and that the rezoning will resolve any underlying density issue. There's been some discussion regarding right-of-ways. I may add some notes on right-of-ways. There are only two state freeway highways in the county. Those are Route 211 and 231. Highway 522 is actually a US highway, and then it crosses state lines. Every other road in the county is either a state secondary road, such as Route 600, Thornton Gap Church Road, or a smaller rural route. The width of right-of-ways on many of the roads in the county varies. If you call VDOT and ask them to tell you what a right-of-way is for a certain road, they'll say that they don't know, and they'll have, they would suggest that you go to the court office to check the deed books for specific information. What do you find when you check the deed books? The deed from Masses Corner, for example, lists a right-of-way of 50 feet. We all know that it's well in excess, so probably 200 feet. Further, the right-of-way of 211 goes from Masses Corner at 200 feet and tapers all the way down to head west, heading toward the park, down to 30 feet. What else do you find? That not all deeds of surveyed plots indicate right-of-ways. On Thornton Gap Church Road, the right-of-way varies from 50 to 30 feet. Lot 38-18 has a right-of-way of 50 feet. Lot 38-104, less than 300 feet from this property, has a right-of-way of 50 feet per the surveyed plot. There may be other properties on Thornton Gap Church Road with 50-foot right-of-ways. However, there's no way to know without further investigation. Lastly, there has been obviously quite a bit of opposition to this application, and I appreciate everyone coming out, and hopefully they can find their way back home safely tonight. I've heard that this proposal would somehow impact people's enjoyment of the Shenandoah National Park. The statement to me is highly prejudiced. Per my study of VDOT average daily trips, Thornton Gap Church Road is unlikely to be primarily used by locals. This property is eastern-facing and therefore not visible from the park. The slopes in this particular area of the property are not steep, and topography actually provides physical and visual barrier to both adjoining neighbors in the park area to the west. I've heard that smaller residential home sites should remain on the east side of the road, but there are homes on ant lots, both north and south of the property, on the western side of the road that are small, is one acre, and so others, smaller than our proposed 7.3-acre lot. If you take an average of all the lots in parcels on Thornton Gap Church Road, the average parcel size is around six acres. I've heard that the purpose of this application is solely for private economic gain. While there may be private economic gain from the sale of this parcel, the public and community at large will also realize economic gain, with incoming revenue from real estate taxes, personal property taxes, property fees, inspection fees, utility fees, sewer fees, et cetera, as well as local sales tax income that would come from new residents supporting local businesses. I have heard some alarmist language about slippery slopes and that if this rezoning is approved, we will be back to rezoning this remaining 20 acres from more residential home sites. I can assure you, this is not the case at all. Assumptions have been made about our motivation for rezoning. I am not supply-by-night speculative real estate developer. It took my fiancee and I nearly three years to find this property. Currently living in the home that I grew up in in Fort Royal, we searched properties all over the area, Warren, Shenandoah, Falkir Counties, and every time we would say, we really like Sperryville, wouldn't it be great to find a property there? And we finally did, and we're really happy about it. The plan and our goal is to build our home on the remaining 20 acres and have it remain as agricultural. I'd like to thank you for your time this evening. I believe that this court, within this court's discretion, will approve the design of the application based on information provided. I'd like to thank the Summers and the zoning staff for all their assistance and patience as they brought this application forward. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hang out close to the microphone, Tony, we have some questions. Mr. Sis, would you wish to this off?
I'll be short and sweet on this one. I've received a lot of calls, more than I have the entire time that I've been here over this one issue. As I see it right in front of me, unless it's explained to me different, accepted conservation agricultural zoning districts, less than 25-acre lots will go out 50 feet. Thornton Gap Church Road is a state secondary road that's 40-foot right-of-way, not 50-foot. That being said, that would be enough for me to say, no, I don't agree with it. So I'm going to give everyone else an opportunity to speak, but I'm not in favor, and I would recommend it not.
Thank you. Mr. Ritter?
You know, a change in rezoning requires some kind of evidence of an overriding public need, and I was trying to think of what you could possibly proffer that might fit that public need, and I came up with, well, you could build on your seven acres and donate the rest of the property to the county. Short of that, I just, I don't see a public need. In fact, what public need exists, I think, is to maintain the agricultural zoning.
Mr. Short?
Precedent, precedent has been brought up several times, and I think we established that with Tom Taylor's Sperryville property back then. There's no way that I think we can approve this.
I'm sorry, is the Taylor property in the, we're, we're?
No, but it's on 40-foot right-of-way, and that's good enough for me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ritter?
I'm in agreement with the comments that have already been made from my fellow members here. I do not see any way we should approve this, and it would definitely be a precedent setting, and I think that's a neighborhood review, not a building.
Mr. Ryan?
To me, the central issue is the stability of the current neighborhood and the lack of compelling need. I do appreciate the work and effort and the fact that there are smaller parcels here, but it's, you know, it's not, it's not the worst place I can imagine to have a five-acre parcel, but, but again, the logic, and I don't want to be, you know, too lenient, I'm the boogeyman of precedent, but I do think we have to be prepared, like a lot of comments are said, for what's different about this argument than the one that's going to come after that, and the one that's going to come after that, and the one that's going to come after that. And I would argue that while there are arguments that would support it, there's, it's far from a compelling need, and I think it would be kind of disruptive to the established character of the neighborhood.
Mr. Trent?
When you look at the zoning
When you look at the zoning map, which contains a large percentage of the area here, you see that this parcel number seventeen does have some conservation zoning elements in the back of it. And across the road, it is the RR property, as we speak, you know, that runs over to Route 612. And, you know, that property there, the way that was developed was that there was, if you look at the ownership, there's family names there that have been in Rappahannock twenty years, and just basically, family members, one after another, either buy the house or give the child a house, something like that, and most of that was done, if you look at the age of those houses, most of that was done before there was the zoning ordinance in here. So that's how that little cluster of RR got developed. And if you move one down to Sperryville, we had a discussion last year that actually had merits to it on the Taylor property, because that adjoined the village of Sperryville, and there was a lot of discussion on whether or not it was Sperryville. And Sperryville is not defined by meets and bounds, but when you look at the zoning on it, you can, let's see where Sperryville is. And this adjoined, it was a part of the village that had sewer available, and it was about the discussion whether or not that could go from five acre to two acre, and it was determined by the board supervisors that it wasn't. And when we look at your property way out here, I mean, there's a number of properties that separates it from the village, and eliminates, I think, any potential consideration of rezoning. It's simply a country property that serves as a transition into the bigger ag and conservation areas. So I don't think there's a precedence of surrounding properties that are compatible to this, and the overwhelming use of this area is the zone of ag and conservation. You've got a little RR there in all of this village down here, but the predominant use is ag and conservation. And I've just got two questions to ask, one question. You're a very intelligent person. You demonstrated, you've done all these analyses and everything on Rappahannock County and on, you know, the average lot sizes and all these kinds of things, research and breadth. Whatever made you determine in your mind to think that this would succeed in a day? Because it's never happened before. What made you think this would be the first one? Just out of curiosity, was it something that you read that you thought was going to happen, or you had the magic wand, you know, make it happen? What made you think this would kind of happen?
No, not at all. The property is thirty-six acres. When we looked at it, it's four acres than we had intended to get, and we liked the area so much, the power line created a natural dividing line, seven acres, it fit the RR five potential rezoning in the area, and as we talked about it, we said, "Well, you know, we maintain the agricultural use for ourselves. We like the area, and why not give someone else the opportunity to buy and build a home here as well?" So ultimately, that was kind of the driving force behind the...
We've had other cases in the county where people have come in and requested uses, and we found that those uses are not particularly good in one area, but maybe another area. And this is a little bit different here. I think, I think you've heard from your neighbors tonight, they'll welcome you to live here on a property that exists today, but having two houses, two properties there is a completely different world for everybody, so I think you still have an opportunity, you and your fiancee, to live here and have a nice house and everything, but I don't think there's too much of a difference.
I appreciate that. I will add, in terms of residential zoning, what is allowed under residential zoning is potentially far more than just two houses. We can build a house, we can build caretaker's cottage, we can build additional dwelling units.
We have use permits for all those, and what goes with all those use permits? Is a famous word, maybe.
Of course.
Maybe, maybe. You've got to cross those bridges, and we'll cross those bridges down the revenue if you come back to us in the future.
What may be built on that property as agriculture is far more than what could be built on one single property.
Every property in this county has rights, yeah, and so you can come back to us and exercise what you're right to.
I will add along those lines, if I may. Lastly, most importantly, in the staff notes, at the conclusion of the summary, code section of what they were referencing, I believe, one forty-seven dash forty-eight, and I believe one seventy thirty-eight, they say, quote, "Restriction imposed by this one short paragraph practically nullifies the rights granted in the remainder of the code, and as such, we find highly problematic, and believe that its enforceability is questionable, likely not defensible." In other words, to me, it is in fact stripping away the rights of all landowners to use and develop their property, not as they see fit, but as otherwise would be allowed in the zoning ordinance, in effect creating a zero development policy. And I believe you without, thank you all for your time tonight, and I appreciate all you put from you, and if you decide to move forward in any way, I would certainly welcome and try to reach out to my neighbors and see if there were some things that they might like to see in terms of properties that might make them more accepting of the proposed authority, understand the positions tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weins. All right, Mr. Sis, this is in our district. Would you care to make a motion?
I recommend no.
There's a resolution attached in the agenda. Would you recommend that they adopt the resolution for denial of the application?
Our recommendation for denial.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion second. Thank you, Mr. Schley. Any further conversation? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Let's take a brief five-minute basis. Thank you. The attorney of the night, Blue Rock Inn, application, special exception twenty-three oh seven oh two. We heard this some last month. Could you bring us up to date on what transpired with this application?
Sure. So at last month's meeting, the planning commission table this application and seeks more information. They, the planning commission wanted a more detailed contact plan showing the traffic flow of the interior of the site, footprint of the banquet facility, and the three stretchers for extra rooms, including square footage and parking locations. The commission also requested more information from the health department on the six-hundred gallons, the flow rate of wells on site, well logs of surrounding wells, and VDOT to revisit comments pertaining to an event at the high school and at the end at the same time, such as a large banquet. I have received this evening, in which I placed on board docs, some schematics from Mr. Brown regarding the site plans and the banquet building and in itself. Yet to receive any other information, but the advocate may be able to speak to that more.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, would you, or the advocate, wish to add anything additional?
I'll be very brief, Madam Chair. I spoke in length at the last meeting. We have supplemented the materials, and those are available, and Ms. Summers will pull those up. I'm sorry, Ms. Summers will be able to pull those up, that is, the updated site plan and elevation illustrations of the proposed buildings. One of the other things I think that what wasn't mentioned is that we have amended the application to withdraw the request for subdivision approval. The planning commission will remember that we had, in the earlier version, asked that there be permission to subdivide the parcel into three parcels. That we have completely withdrawn, so that's no longer part of the application. I did also handout, before the meeting started, left a couple of pages of just sort of bullet points, a summary of some of the questions, and the information that the planning commission members had asked for. Last meeting, Mr. Dowling will speak to those in more detail this evening, and I'll just conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. First of all, again, you guys know why we're here, which is just to help Blue Rock become more sustainable economically than it is right now, and what really the intent of this proposal is to do that and also really to preserve the beauty of that valley, and everything we've done is really with the consideration of our neighbors and the beauty, and why we, why we bought here in the first place was recognizing that special. And I'd also add to preserve and enhance the agricultural and equestrian use of the property, which is very much part of our plan. We appreciated the questions from last time, from the commissioners on different issues, and I'll just run through really quickly if you guys have some of the handouts. We looked at the parking and the traffic flow issue, and the short version of it is that the current parking area has about fifty spots, the overflow parking area, which includes, as you can see on the chart, the arena area, and there's actually some spots outside the arena we could use there, not shown, but that would be additional. Plus, there's the ability, if we needed to, to put another parking lot to the west of the driveway. We don't have that now because we haven't needed it, but we could do another forty spots there if we needed it. In other words, that brings a total to about a hundred and ninety spots that are readily available on the site if we need to done. Most of the time, Blue Rock's not going to need more than, you know, twenty or thirty spots, but we said, "Okay, what's your maximum sort of potential worst-case day?" And we came up with that in terms of a hundred and sixty-five would be sort of the worst day of the year kind of situation. That's about twenty-five cars for a restaurant, twenty for inn guests, a hundred for event guests, twenty staff, I guess you could buy a hundred and sixty-five. So we've got, we believe, more than enough parking, and that doesn't even include some other areas we could look at if we wanted to. We also looked at the traffic issue. I know a number of the commissioners were interested in that, and I think the key point is the separation, the four lane and the separation of 211 there really makes this a lot easier, and the high school and Blue Rock are sort of well offset from each other, which adds that. All the Blue Rock traffic goes west, and it wouldn't be able to U-turn to come back towards high school for about a quarter mile before it comes back the other direction. So it's a lot of distance, so you don't have traffic close conflicting that way. The high school does have a crossover at its entrance, so the high school traffic, obviously a lot of it may go east, but the ones that would turn west would have to go about two hundred yards before it would reach where the Blue Rock acceleration, deceleration starts. So those are also pretty conflicted. I believe that Ms. Summers in the county asked VDOT to look at it again, which I think was what you guys wanted to do. I don't know if we got an answer from VDOT, but we did get sort of an informal input from the VDOT people that they didn't see any issues at it, that they could look at it again, but doesn't sound like they gave the county an informal answer on that. But from our standpoint, that, we believe that that is, has been looked at by VDOT, and they didn't see the need to, I guess, reissue their opinion on it. Septic, we had the property looked at for septic a couple of years ago when we originally submitted the application for the event facility, and that building permit included the whole septic field, had the engineers look at that, and the engineers at the time also identified additional septic areas on the eighty acres of the property that would be appropriate for good expansion and the other things. The bottom line is, that is just with normal drainage septic use. It doesn't even include if you wanted to, if we needed to use any sort of more high-technology, high-capacity septics. So even with sort of the most low-capacity septic systems, engineers found more than enough for what we're proposing. Waterage. So we went back to the engineers who are from ESS Engineering firm, that I think many of you folks know, to talk to them and for us to learn more about some of this concern about, sort of, the water capacity for Blue Rock, and we did some calculations about what the current use is, what the neighboring use is, and what the expansion would do. And the bottom line is that Blue Rock in that area has, has a benefit of a really strong water table and water capability. In fact, the engineer said that our well capacity could do forty-eight thousand gallons a day of water capacity if needed to. Like you said, you could do a whole subdivision in this area with this amount of water, which of course is not anything close to what we're doing. Our estimate is that we would, you know, roughly double our water use, you know, a little bit less than that, or a little bit more than that. Like right now, I think we're about four hundred gallons a day on average. Some days, obviously, higher, like weekends and big things, but many days, we're using very little. But four hundred gallons a day is kind of our average. If this full proposal was accepted, it would go up to nine hundred gallons a day, and that's compared to the engineer's estimate that our capacity is forty-eight thousand gallons a day, so fifty times what it is. Just to do another point of comparison, one data source we found was that the high school uses a triple what we use now, about fourteen hundred gallons a day. So bottom line, as we looked at the water issue, it was certainly a good concern, but one that we feel like was well addressed. We heard the request for more detail about what the buildings would look like and what the property looked like, some of the elevations that we provided that Ms. Summers can put on can sort of show what, there's one of the elevations of the event facility designed architecturally to look like a barn, look like an agricultural building, to fit in and hopefully be attractive, and there's also some elevations. And these are more, I should say, on the, the event barn elevation is really designed for as the permit would be submitted. These are more notional. This is along the lines of what we're thinking. We haven't really gone through the full design process on the inn additions, because of course, we don't, we wouldn't do that until we get Tony permission to do so, but based on the request that we heard from you guys, we did up, we asked our architect to put together some representative looks of what we want it to be, which is to look like agricultural and farmhouses, and also to match what the Blue Rock looks like today. So this is some examples of what those buildings would look like, the front and rear elevations. And I think that's kind of what we heard in terms of the questions that you guys had last time. Certainly have more details if you have questions about any of that, and we'll go over there.
Thank you. Last time, we kept this public hearing open, so at this point, I would just reopen the public hearings, so that anyone that wishes to speak may do so. At this time, just approach the microphone and leave comments. Yes, Mr. Anderson.
My name is Mark Anderson, and I live in Peatmont District. To add to what Mr. Dowling just said, one of my duties on the farm, which I'm there a couple of times a week, is to refill the water tanks. There is a lot of flow out of the pump we have. I can fill a sixty-gallon tank in about fifteen minutes, and it's never been a problem litter or summer for the last three years. As far as the cross-country team, which I did not mention, we went to a big track meet a week ago Wednesday. They had four high schools there. The first thing I tell you is there were forty cars parked, there were three school buses in the area just above where the polo arena is, there, to the right. Kind of all over the place, but that needs to be taken into the parking plan. It sounds like it has been, and the odds of them being parking there at the same time, they're going to eat a lot of spaces, but the uses are pretty low. They're late afternoon on weekdays, and they're only there probably four or five times a year. Finally, I talked to a reputable Realtor whose name you would recognize, who said when the septic system was engineered, Baumgartner Senior put it together and put in a lot of excess capacity that's already there. I don't have any metrics, unfortunately, but there's probably almost enough there to get started on these extra buildings that they want to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, if there's no one else that wishes to speak, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Henry, did you want to speak to this application?
I think the application has substantially improved since last month. I think the information that we requested, the standard of length, I'm very happy to see that the request to subdivide the property into three parcels has been taken out to where now we're really talking about one parcel of seventy-nine point five-six acres of the... where now we're really talking about one parcel of 79.56 acres instead of these three parcels that were going to be of various sizes and pretty large. So I think this property as a unit gives it the capability to buffer the surrounding areas. I think it gives it the capability if there's an issue or future need for water or future need for drain field, it substantially increases the ability to address all this stuff easily on site. You know, we got the renderings of what the property's going to look like, the barn, reception center up there fits into the area. You know, one thing that, you know, we had concerns last month about the interaction with the high school and this property. And I guess the one big thing about the high school is that whenever they have an event there, they have police there. So, you know, that's that's one thing that we don't encounter. Other considerations, that there's going to be a police officer there helping to manage the traffic going in and then when it's over with for the school. So that that's a benefit there that we had been talking about last month. The water usage, I think, is addressed. And if this tremendous well he has fails, he's got 79 acres to do another well. My project, I drilled a well when I built my house, and it had issues. It was weak in the beginning, had a gallon or two a minute. Five years later, it was dry. I moved 50 feet, and I dropped 50 gallons a minute. So, you know, what's underground, we don't know. But he's got plenty of land there. And if you look at the surrounding areas there that are that are basically reservoirs for water, I mean, you've got mountains and valleys all around, and there's plenty of reservoir and mineral uses is there. And I think the water has been addressed, and this property has been in use now since 1992, basically with no issues. And I think this, I guess that's what 30, oh, 31 years of history that you've got to look at here. So, you know, I think if there's any place that this is a candidate for this use, it's here. You've got Sperryville Rescue Squad, Fire Department. You've got Little Washington Rescue Squad and Fire Department. The only county that really compares with this, I think, is probably Councils and Farms. And look where they are, and there's no mineral issues there. So I think he's fortunate to have this location on this highway in between Sperryville and Little Washington for access. And I think this has all the things necessary to carry out what he needs to carry out. Here's a question of ours.
Thank you. Mr. Light?
I'm not sure who to address this question to, but I maybe I'll start with the applicant. With the withdrawal of the idea of subdividing, if that didn't constrain in any way, I guess I'm trying to understand why that was in to begin with. It seemed like there was a reason. Did you have to do something else to the site plan to adjust to the fact that you weren't subdividing? I'd like to understand that better. Specifically, I'm wondering if if also, and maybe this is an easier question, if the idea of subdividing came up again, would this have to come back to us? So I guess I'm wondering about those those questions. And what would drive it back to us?
It was a condition on the last one.
It was?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe you could address the question of, did the removal of the subdivisions necessitate other changes to the layout?
Not at all. In fact, withdrawing the subdivision, a part of it was actually my recommendation to my mind. It seemed in our last meeting that we were getting too far in the lead and concerns over the subdivision. And it was really detracting from the main purpose of the application, which is to expand the the occupancy and use at Blue Rock.
Great, thank you. No, I tend to agree with Mr. Henry. The plan has certainly improved a lot. It's filled in some of the details that we were looking for with respect to layouts, traffic, parking, et cetera. So appreciate that. No, I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Shulman?
I think I'm in agreement with Mr. Light and Mr. Henry. I think the location, the expansion of this location is, I don't think there's a better spot though. Major highway. My only concern is, I was trying to look through the application for when special events would end. I saw that the outdoor music would end at 10 o'clock. But when would the event end and people leave?
I'm not sure, Mr. Shulman. I'm not sure we put a specific cutoff time in the application material. I'm going to check. Of course, that would be something that the planning commission could make a recommendation on to the board.
I guess my other only question is, when you say that a bulk of your guests will be returning, heading back to Madison Ray or back towards Warnton? You don't have?
I'm not sure we can speculate on that. My wild guess would be that you'd have more headed east, but.
That would be my guess, too.
Yeah.
So just because they happen to go west for a little bit doesn't mean there won't be an end of stream of cars, well, I mean, for a few minutes. They don't want to pass that high school on event. I don't know if there was a police officer out, but the last football game I was there.
There isn't always.
Not always, yes. I guess you can't.
There is no cutoff time for the banquet facility itself. It's just that the outdoor music ceases at 10 o'clock, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I have no questions except to say that I would I would go with the staff recommended conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Seitz?
I'm glad you answered all my questions.
Right? Mr. Atkins?
I think they've done a good job of responding to the questions that we had. I'm satisfied with the result that they provided back to us.
Thank you. All right, well, with this being in your district that you're here, Mr. Henry, did you care to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we pass on to the board supervisors and a recommendation of approval of the application with the elimination of any reference to the duck dividing the property that was proposed. The applicant eliminated that. Clarify that our motion goes to the board that that's been removed from the application and that any future request for subdivision of the property would would have to be reviewed by the planning position and the board. And one last thing, we had a discussion last month about the use of the road to the subdivision next door. What's the name?
Christmas Tree.
Christmas Tree Lane. Christmas Tree Lane. And that the use of Christmas Tree Lane is limited to agricultural and emergency use only in terms of this application. It's not to be used as a as a point of of access to bring supplies, equipment, or anything for the operation of the commercial function, the events, and those kinds of things. It could be used for farm purposes.
Can I ask, can I ask one question about that? As you'll recall from the site plan, the proposal was to relocate the caretaker's cottage up to the, I guess, north of the of the event facility. And I think the logical place and the best place would be to access that.
I don't have any problem with that. That use, that use included with no commercial use of Cisco trucks, anything like that through the residential use of that caretaker's.
So the caretaker, but not guests, for example?
Right, right.
But that would be a thing, but I think it's a pretty easy distinction.
Yeah, only necessary use for that caretaker's house.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
I'll send it.
Thank you. Mr. Atkins, is that, do you have that motion captured from the shuttle set of A?
Well, kind of wrangled on.
We want to have a quick recap. Make sure we stop the highlights.
So recommendation of approval with the elimination of the subdivision of the property by the applicant, that any future divisions would require another special exception permit. And the use of Christmas Tree Lane is limited to only agricultural, emergency vehicles and.
Tenant.
Tenants of the caretaker's cottage and no commercial traffic.
Thank you.
And the other staff conditions.
Right, right, right.
So it sounds like we have a motion at second. I'm just refreshing my memory about these conditions. I do recall there being some discussion a little bit about the two events per week. It seemed pretty intense. I suppose that would only be certain times, but have you given that direct thought, Mr.
I thought it was it was an acceptable proposal. I would add that I think we would add a cutoff if music ceases at 10, do you want the event to cease at 10 or the event to cease at 11?
I mean, if the enter indoors, I don't know that that, to me, it's more, I don't know, I'm just, there was some discussion around the two. Did we reopen the conflict of public? What happened with the public?
We had the public hearing, and I didn't close the public hearing last month, so I reopened it and closed it.
You already did reopen and close it, so I see there's some of the audience.
Well, I mean, we could recognize the person that wishes to speak in the audience.
Right, you are the chairperson, but I would recommend that.
Mr. Light?
I live in this store, obviously. I hear the music. And I don't want to be sinner-nated every week until 10 o'clock. So there, with his discretion, I'm keeping it down low. I, as a neighbor, would appreciate it because either that or I want to choose the music. But it does care.
Who do you like?
I'm sure. Tell me what you hate. But no, but that, you know, if he keeps it down, it's okay. But it's it's very, it's my, if the wind's going my way, I hear it. And if it's going the other way, the other people hear it. So if you're going to let 200 people and you're going to let it to 10 o'clock or 11, then he has to use some discretion about the noise level.
It also seems that we're, I think, we're contemplating this, I don't know, maybe we're assuming that these will be indoor events, but I'm not sure there's anything here that that compels that. I mean, we're building an event facility, so I think, I don't know, in my mind, I'm assuming that that will be the sole place for the events.
It's indoor events? Well, I think in nice weather, doors will be open. And I think the proposal talks about outdoor music to 10 p.m. or is it? But I would certainly be okay with saying that nothing outdoors after 10 p.m. I think we would be happy to put that into our proposal or accept that as a condition if that if that helps.
Well, that's what they said. That's no different. Just keep the noise level down. In other words, if the noise is at your place, I don't care. If it's in my back door, I do. And it's, I heard some not too long ago, so it does care.
All right, thank you. I don't want to get into too much detail here, but I, I mean, I recognize the the challenge. And we often talk about how noise carries in this county. And I just have to tell you, I think you run a wonderful establishment. It's a beautiful place. I think we talk about the buffer between the commercial zone and agriculture. And to my mind, this increasing the permissions on the property continues to erode the purpose of the buffer, in my opinion. I appreciate that you're a very good businessman and you're looking for ways to further monetize your property. I do begin to wonder at what point it's to the detriment of your neighbors. And sometimes I wish the people that were at the last hearing and extolled the virtues of agriculturally zoned parcels were here to hear this hearing and see what people live with that live next to an agriculturally zoned parcel. But as long as this has been requiring or requesting special exceptions, people have voted against it. And I think, you know, that it's nothing personal. I just look at that it is zoned for agriculture. And I wonder, at what point is this really not an agricultural property anymore? But that's a bit of an aperture from where you were going, Mr. Light.
Well, it's kind of on point because, again, you could have this vision, there's this barn, we're imagining events there, but I'm also sort of thinking about other unintended situations that we've dealt with at some of these vineyards and things where the events aren't the weddings and the charming, you know, things, but they're hot air balloons and surfaces and things that wouldn't necessarily be in the facility. So I think we need to be a little bit careful. And I would like, it doesn't sound like that's the intent, but right now, I'm not seeing anything that kind of contains the event other than the three hours and the two per week. There's nothing that says they need to be in the event facility. I don't know. Am I the only one who's arguing any of this?
Mr. Light, would you like to clarify then on the noise that it, that the, that there'll be, there'll amplified music at all, rather than distinguishing between outdoor and indoor?
I think that is, you know, other applications we've had, they feel amplified music and we simply cut it off in a specific town. I'm thinking back to the Swindler application down Bull Mills. I mean, that's a barn-type structure, and we've had time limit on that. I think a time limit meets the necessary item that we need to do.
Well, to be clear, the restriction as currently worded is there is no amplified outdoor music, and the non-amplified outdoor music is to cease at by 10.
That's, that's fine.
So that, I think, to me, this is less about noise and amplified music and the sort of nature of events themselves in this context of field and the open and the space and what else you could do here. It wouldn't necessarily be in the barn. I'm just trying to think through, you know, like a festival or some other outdoor activity that we're not necessarily, may not be part of what we're talking about here, but wouldn't be restricted by this other than 200 people in three hours. So I guess it's pretty restrictive in its own right.
Yeah, three hours can only cap it down. So 10 o'clock, end of music, 11 o'clock, everybody out. Close, close it down.
Events ended. Event reopened.
Events at 10, events ends at 11. Do people in there get out?
I think that's reasonable within, and it's kind of within what we're expecting.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so we have the motion and a second advantage. We'll include that detail then. All right, so we have a motion and a second. And all those, if there's no further discussion, all those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you at the board supervisors. Of course, everyone's welcome to come or go if they stay at this time. All right. We'll be right back.
Didn't seem to come, but I just couldn't.
I'm sorry.
I didn't see the comment.
I just couldn't.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right, that gives us the last couple of items on the agenda.
All right, that brings us to the last couple of items on the agenda. Public comment. If there's anyone that wishes to speak at this time on any other subjects. If there's anyone that wishes to speak at this time on any additional subjects, please feel free to approach Mike and make your comments for the session. If there's no one that wishes to speak, I'll go ahead and close the public comment here. That takes us to an item from the Board of Supervisors of the New Business, Tourist Home Special Acquires. Or Mr. Curry, is this what you're here for?
Oh, I'm here for the, for the enjoyment.
You've been hanging out all night, you can't get off of it.
I'd be happy to talk to this, uh, this, um, Ms. Smith is aware, the, uh, board supervisors discussed tourist homes and the special regulations for tourist homes at their last meeting. Um, there's been a lot of news statewide about this recently, uh, in general. I think Mr. Carney thought perhaps there could be a special regulation that required somebody to own a parcel for some period of time before they would be eligible to apply for a tourist home, with the thought that it could limit the speculative nature of somebody finding a parcel, saying, I'm just gonna go buy that to turn immediately into a tourist home, um, and, and, you know, take it as an affordable housing, um, hedge, I guess. Uh, so Mr. Goff reviewed the state code, he felt like, based on, um, fifteen to twenty-two hundred, the first section in the land use section of state code, he thought that that was probably acceptable to, to do something like that, and that was, uh, included in my memorandum. Uh, so between then, uh, when the board had this discussion on the, at the October meeting, and now, drafted a, a draft ordinance amendment that would add a new, um, new section, requirement in number nine, bumping the old nine down to ten. And, um, this wording was reviewed by the county attorney today. He changed what I originally suggested, so, um, uh, he changed it to this, and I highlighted in green, uh, tourist homes and bed and breakfast, because you might remember one seventy-sixty-six A applies to both tourist homes and bed and breakfast. I don't know if it's the interest of the planning commissioner or board to lump bed and breakfast into this conversation. Then, bed and breakfast never came up during the board discussion, so I think that's something for the planning commission to think about, whether there should be a holding period for both of those uses, and I think you can do only tourist home or both. Uh, you could do it by just changing the words that are in green there. The other green is up as a preamble, and that's just, how do you envision this going forward with public hearings? If you find language that's acceptable, would that be sequential public hearings, planning commission and board, or maybe a joint public hearing, and that would just have to change some language up there to suit whatever path comes on? Happy to answer any other questions.
Well, would it be anyway, just to say, we'll only accept a certain number of tourist homes?
That, that top, that has come up as well, um, and I've been asked that question. I don't know that anybody else does that.
Yeah, couldn't.
However, many localities in the state are now putting caps on solar in acreage, saying, uh, we'll participate in the solar, uh, green energy arena, but we're gonna do our fair share, and that's capped at X number of acres. I don't know if any of those have been tested. Um, I suspect you probably could do it, but you put anything in here you want. Ultimately, whether we stay in court is, you know, is that test, and what are the risks involved in that? So for something like this, um, the risk is you'd be back to where you are today, so it's not critical risk. But if, you know, in some cases, it could be less good.
Now, I didn't see the meeting, but you said, Mr. Carney mentioned affordable housing. Are we addressing affordable housing or rental stock? Because V Z A member mentioned rental stock in her letter to the editor, and he's talking about affordable housing. Now, there've been several, um, there've been several, uh, tourist homes that have nothing to do with affordable housing.
You're right.
Absolutely nothing. The Chester Gap House, nothing to do with affordable housing.
So I think, um, it, it encompasses both areas. I can't tell you Carney's full intent, right? But if a, if somebody is, uh, purchasing a property that's on the market that, um, is in Philip Residential or something, small acreage, small house, that could be affordable housing, but they see it as a speculative interest because they can rent it every single weekend because it's near the Appalachian Trail, then that might be a cash offer, running the price up and taking out of that affordable housing. It could also affect the rental stock in that someone might say, well, I've got speculative play, now I got this rule, I'm gonna buy it, rent it long-term for two years, and then turn it into, but at least you get two years of, of the rental.
The Chester Gap lady bought raw land, built a house.
Yeah, and that's what.
She made it as affordable or unaffordable as she wanted.
Right.
It had nothing to do with anything else. So she, she would be subject to the same rules?
No, I don't think she would be subject to the same rules. She bought a lot.
But it would, it would, so you could change the word, so I think the way it's written, um, they would have to be the owner of that parcel for two years. You, you could change the wording to carve in and out different scenarios. I would caution you from getting too specific and try to.
So, so, okay, but, you know, this came up every now and then about, you know, taking out the stock of rentals. So I went to ask Mary Graham how many there was, and it was thirty-three in the county, of all types, from small to large. How is this a problem? How is thirty-three in all categories a problem? If, if all of a sudden they're concerned about affordable housing, that's never, nobody's never been concerned about affordable housing before. You brought it up, you hear realtors say, you hear board members say, there's no issue with affordable housing in Rappahannock County. Now, we got thirty-three, maybe thirty-eight now, I don't know, depends, down to thirty-one with, uh, Deerfield. You may have thirty-eight now. So how is that a problem? I mean, we, we are addressing something that sounds good, but the problem doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Concern about affordable housing, you know, give some incentives to, to somebody to build, build housing in, in wherever, with the Sperryville, Rappahannock Blades, and Chester Gap. Address it, not, it's like, try to say, if, we're solving the problem by limiting a person's property rights to, to do what they want to do with their house, and most of these thirty-five people, they're still using their house. They're getting, they rented a couple, couple weekends a month, and then they're using themself. But the people down there, uh, at the, uh, at the, at the church down there on Aaron Mountain Road, that was right away, that had rented it and got in trouble, they were using it and, and had rented it too. So it's not, a lot of these problems are not solely used for tourist homes. And this guy here tonight, you know, he had a, a family issue that forced him to do it. I don't know how many times he's doing it, but, you know, I can only think of one time, uh, that this board entertained, uh, and that was up, uh, Old Hollow, where somebody came in and was gonna buy some land and build, uh, homes simply to rent on Airbnb. I believe it was only one time, that was about five or six years ago. So, I mean, we're talking about something that really doesn't exist, it sounds good, we can read it, but it's a lot of problem.
Uh, Ms. Summers is, is working right now with this frame to try to fine tune all that, that data, and I imagine it'll be similar to what you said. I don't know that the, the current active short-term rentals is necessarily indicative of the overall impact of people thinking they can make it work in this game and then bid up homes and things like that. They might, they might jump in and buy a home and find out they screwed up. But they've, they've already done the damage at that point.
We're also taking a position, or maybe you are, or we are, that they respect, they respect with it. A lot of these people bought the houses because they had the freaking cash. The government gave them the money, it was COVID, they were locked down. I think that's what we're dealing with now. It's those houses. These are second homes, vacation homes. Someone may move here, who knows? I just, I just don't see that as, as a problem.
Could I get someone to opine, the, the, the letters and some of the other numbers that are running around are one hundred and forty-one, not thirty-eight? That, that's a pretty big difference, can you explain?
No, 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 registered Airbnbs and actually ones being used and collecting tax.
Okay, so is that the, is that the distinction?
Those are, that's, those are the data that Ms. Summers, right?
There's one hundred and forty-one that have been approved, and thirty-something, forty-something appear to be active. That's how I should understand those numbers.
So what people do, they get this permit, and it's a gravy train.
Yep.
And they, and they try to abide by the Airbnb regulations and everything, and they don't have the technology or the expert, expertise to do it. And they fall out.
Or it's a pain, or they don't have the, the revenue that they thought, or they realize it's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, it's, so, I mean, I still have a bed and breakfast permit.
You're one of the one forty's, or?
I might be, oh, yeah. And believe me, it's not active.
Is your house affordable?
No. Yeah, never mind, don't get me started. I think the one other scenario, I know there's a lot of things, and I'm not sure we're closing in on anything, but I actually kind of like the cooling off, not holding period. I do think it would contribute, it would, it would, it would prevent the purchase successfully or otherwise of, of a speculative Airbnb, so I do, I think I like that concept. One scenario that concerns me, though, is how we're making all of these Airbnb approvals conditional, uh, they, they terminate at the point of sale, so I, I think that's a little bit of an issue, because if somebody, if it's already an Airbnb and someone buys it, now you're saying you're taking it out of being an Airbnb for two years. I think that seems to be unintended in, in what I've heard, so I, I, I'd love to get a commission or anything about that.
But one thing that that does, that, that kills any inherent value to that property that has developed because of the revenue flow.
Yeah.
So if you buy one thinking you're gonna create this mini motel that you can sell based upon the income, that takes that out because.
And that's a good thing in your view?
I'm just saying what it does.
Yeah, I, I agree, but it's also, it also seems like it would be disruptive. Instead of, instead of preventing the addition, in that case, we're actually taking some of them out of the system, which I don't think is the intent necessarily.
I have to say, as a board member, um, I, I just heard about this at the last meeting, the two-year waiting period, and I, I do think we need to do something. I have to say, I kind of prefer the approach that Richmond took, which was, um, you know, to get, uh, to be able to run as an Airbnb, you have to occupy the property one hundred and eighty-five days of the calendar year, which is, while it's very difficult to enforce, I think it, to me, encompasses more the idea that what people want are neighbors, not tourists, uh, living next door to them. And that while certainly people may have the right to rent their home out to realize additional income, um, it still should be a private home primarily instead of a commercial enterprise. But I do understand that that would be very difficult.
Well, uh, my personal view is that will also be extremely disruptive, because I still think the core of our bed, or Airbnb and tourist home stock are already second homes, and that, to me, would pretty much kill most of the applications we have seen, because most of them are, they, what they, what the Airbnb function does is allow people who have a second home and may use it three or four or eight or ten weeks out of the year, or maybe forty weeks out of the year, uh, but they want to be able to, you know, rent it when they're not here. So I personally don't support that level. I mean, that's one of the provisions, the other being that it's their primary residence. I don't know, you did mention that part, but to me, that would, uh, I guess, without regard at what it would do to the existing stock, that would be, be a real kill to new Airbnbs, uh, as we currently know them in the form of tourist homes.
Our, our definition of tourist home is transient lodging that accommodates not more than ten persons and not more than five rooms, lodging units. One is rented in its entirety and not by a lodging unit. So how can you live there?
When you go on vacation, you can rent your house to somebody else.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, there are Airbnbs, I think in, in general, there is a category of Airbnb, which is, you know, a bedroom in, you know, a basement. I think there were, I can remember one, I believe the Oyster application some years ago was specifically about a part of the house.
There's one in Chester Gap that's one room.
Yeah, there, there may be some of those, but it's certainly the exception, not the rule, with, with respect to the current structure and the, and the history of our tourist home rentals, which kind of predates the Airbnb model. But I think most of our Airbnbs are more like our traditional tourist homes. And that's why I think the idea of requiring that they be primary residences, when we have roughly twenty percent of our housing stock is second homes, I think that would really take a, a, a value to the county out of those, uh, short-term rentals of those second homes. I, I would not support that.
So what, has the county, we've, uh, put an application, annual application fee on the Airbnb? No, so the, the board did just update the, um, the lodging tax code to align with state code and did allow a registry to be formed. The state code that allows us to have a registry allows us to charge an annual fee to that registry. Commissioner Revo and Treasurer felt that putting an annual fee would have a chilling effect on compliance, and so that they decided, they thought that wasn't a good decision, and the ordinance got by Board fifty-two.
If you, if you don't have a fee, then you can't operate, then you're not an Airbnb. So that's how you, you know what you have and how you're controlling it. The way it is now, am I not correct, that the money goes into Airbnb, Airbnb pays out the tax to the county, and you really don't know which unit pays the tax?
That's the way it was. State code just changed to force those intermediaries to tell us who's paying.
I did mention to the board, too, that we had, you know, kind of bandied around the idea of, of an annual fee, and, um, there didn't seem to be a, an interest at the board level to.
You, you can do it, um, by state code to, um, cover the cost of keeping the rest.
And we charge, we charge a land use fee to reevaluate our land uses, and, you know, it, it.
People are fighting to get in that door.
Yeah, well, it, it seems that it's common sense, if these people are taking services and time from the county, you charge them for what they, uh, for what they're taking, and you know how many you actually got. You don't have to guess. That's the great thing about charging a licensing fee.
I don't disagree.
Well, that was my position.
That is a revenue source.
But, you know, that, that wasn't the, folks who have to implement the, the registry didn't, didn't think that would be helpful.
I have a comment. I look at the tourist home in a way, I think it needs to be vested in our county, not solely invested in our county. The way I look at that is, like, tourist home, I see a, say, you have a family that has a house, they live in their house, they have a second house, that they, uh, they could turn into a tourist home. And they use the income from that tourist home to survive and continue to live in our county, towards their retirement. That, they have investing, they are vested in our county, but they're investing in their future as well.
Well, I appreciate that, but I also think we have a long history of very productive contributing people who are second homeowners here, who don't have their primary residence here and don't live. And I, while I appreciate it and agree with where you're going, I wouldn't want to, I, I, I think we do need to recognize the value of the tax base and the, uh, income that comes from the property taxes and the, the market for second homes in Rappahannock County. And I, granted that that doesn't necessarily mean they should have the right to rent them out. I would just be careful, I wouldn't want to take from your message that only the people who are primary residents here are, are vested in the county. I, I would take some exception if that. I would take some exception if that's what you're suggesting, which I don't think you are. I just would add that.
So, this hybrid idea that we're talking about, are there other counties that have done that?
Possibly a number of them.
I know Lexington, Virginia, they're bigger than us, of course, but their requirement is you have to be, you have to, if you want an Airbnb, you have to show residency one hundred and eighty days, and then the other, you're allowed to do whatever.
Which is similar to what Richmond just adopted.
So, I mean, I think, I think every, every action, there's a reaction and a result that comes out of that. So, you know, in the last couple of years, our mail tax has gone up surprisingly. We've got a large number of restaurants in this county that, you know, they sell fifty-dollar a pop meals, and, you know, it's become, I never thought it would become this much of a budget line, source of revenue from the meals tax and, not counting the room taxes that is generated. So, you know, there's ramifications to our actions, and I don't, I don't hope what they will do is going to somewhat chill, you know, the growth in the meal taxes, because these people, they come out and they rent a place for, you know, a thousand dollars for a weekend, five hundred for a weekend, and they're not necessarily going to stay there, you know, and eat whatever food they brought with them. They're gonna go out to these restaurants and corner store, these kind of places, and spend money. So, you know, that's a part of our structure, that we don't have a lot of things to get money from, and that's one thing that has actually proven to be fruitful. So, do you take some feathers off the chicken, or do you give the chickens a feed, you know? So, that's, so, I don't know how much the board has talked about and thought about this. I mean, this sounds a great one-liner that we're gonna govern there for two years, but, you know, the ramifications down the road, I guess we're the planning commission, I guess we can, you know, think about it longer than the board supervises. I think this developed very quickly. I mean, this is happening, what, sixty days?
Less than sixty days. I don't think there's an expectation, and I don't speak for the board, but my read from the board is that I don't think they're expecting this to be turned around in light speed and you schedule a public hearing right away. I think they want your input and discussion on the value of this sort of language being put into the code or not. And if, if the majority of the planning commission thinks it's a bad idea, they probably want to hear that. If the majority of the board thinks it's a great idea, they want to hear that. Or if some modified version or different tactic is important, they want to hear that. Or we can say, we don't think there's a problem with.
Do you want to, so maybe next month, they can talk to us about here?
You can ask. No, I think it's important to know where, why we're being asked. Affordable housing, rental stock? Or is it prices of homes going up, or, you know, what, is it a combination of all of it, or, you know?
Well, I think there's a concern about, you know, people buying homes with a kind of speculation or expectation. I know I've gotten calls, hey, I'm looking at this property, but I can only really afford it if I can Airbnb this part of it. And that's not really where we want to head, I think, it's, you know.
Well, you might if it's your son. You want him to stay in the county, I mean.
Well, what it, what it did on this particular property is, is it inflated the value of the property because of his expectation.
I remember the county being, past a bunch of hogwash about Hattie and Chester Gap that they needed to Airbnb it to make ends meet, and that's a bunch of garbage. So, we approved an application down from Mr. Jenkins down at 621. He bought a property next door, and seventy acres, and it was a great deal, bought a property next door, and he's got an Airbnb, the house. He got the house all fixed up, and he's been so busy farming, he hasn't been able to rent the house.
Right.
But the fact that he bought the house, you know, that was great for us, because that's, that's what we did, that's what we wanted.
So, now, now it is available to be rented, once we realize that the short-term rental isn't going to be.
I guess what would also help me as a board member and as a member of this commission is that when we get our meals and lodging tax revenue numbers by quarter, it's like one hundred and fifty-three thousand in the most recent first quarter of the full year '24 report. Traditionally, a third of that is lodging, and two-thirds of that is meals. This is typically the trend we've seen over the years. And I'd like to know if that is still trending accurately along those lines? And if there is also a way to separate the tax revenue we receive on the lodging side from Airbnbs versus other sources of lodging revenue?
No, you mean a short-term rental versus a bed and breakfast or country inn or?
Correct. That would, that would be very, I think, helpful to see what, because once you figure it's fifty thousand a quarter, and then you realize all of the different places that are having input into that number, I really wonder what kind of number we're talking about here for tax revenue. Okay, you're here for every meeting, and you, so I'm gonna allow you to speak.
Thank you for indulging me. I'm going to just throw two scenarios out of you with this proposed idea. Glenn Gordon, okay, what if one day they want to sell it? What could it be sold for other than a bed and breakfast? And therefore, somebody contemplating it, they still have the problem of, well, I don't know, I'll decide that. I don't know when Glenn Gordon got approved, so I don't know if they got told until you sell it, or it rides with the property.
That's a country inn, right?
Yeah, well, a country inn.
So, that's different.
Okay, so it doesn't fall in that.
Right.
But I'm saying there's, okay, places that are like that, that are bed and breakfasts for real, I mean, what?
Caladonia Farm, for example.
So, anyway, but my scenario is, how do they get to sell it? Have you put too much of an impediment on selling it when that's what it's going to get used for? So, that's just, I'm just merely asking it as a thought, and then you turn around and also, my property, I got approved 2008, and immediately was in a recession, so it was like, eh, forget it. It wasn't approved for the life of my ownership, it was approved for good. So, how does this kind of thing fit in with some people like me? Even though it's been unused, I'm one of the, part of the one hundred and forty-two, Gary and I, and who knows, I may decide to start it all over again or not. But the fact is, those are the kind of scenarios that you guys see how they fit in or wouldn't. And it could be that you, you know, with the people who have ones that end with their ownership, you know, I've always kind of wondered, you know, if a proposed owner walks in and says, I have a contract based on the fact that this has been going entity as an Airbnb, and that's what I plan to use it for, and, you know. How do you deal with, because the sale may have something to do with that.
Right.
Restriction is a great value.
Yeah. So, it's just the thoughts that you need to kind of expand on, is what could you do with this to make it work for every situation without making it too complicated?
I don't think we're gonna solve it tonight. I think we can.
I just want to add something else, because I don't, I think talking about Airbnb is tricky. We've gone down this path. In our ordinance, we have tourist homes, which, as you articulated earlier, are these traditional houses, and the fact that they get posted and marketed on Airbnb doesn't change the fact that they meet our definition of a tourist home. And then there are bed and breakfasts of the kind of Conyers House.
I don't think that's what we're talking about at all.
That is, those are also posted and marketed on Airbnb particularly. So, to try to use the Airbnb to sort of distinguish, I don't think is a productive path. But I do think we should be thinking about those differently, and I brought up the point earlier about, we should be intentional about whether, if it's an existing tourist home that we've limited to the current ownership, is it really our intent to say the new owner could apply to continue that use until they owned it for two years? That strikes me as something that we didn't.
Right.
Isn't the intent of this, since the intent seems to be to slow the growth? I mean, in addition to the question about affordable housing, I think there's a general skepticism about how many of these things we're approving and what's that gonna mean in the long term, and are we gonna only know when it's been too late and we, you know, turn the whole county over? So, I think we should make that distinction.
How would everyone like to purchase, do you want to take that next month, or would you prefer to have a work session on this?
I think we need to interact with the board on this, on the BOS, and, you know, talk about the whole cloud that we're.
Okay, so, we're looking at a joint meeting with the board supervisors next month, if that's agreeable to everyone?
What was wrong with the rest, doing the rest, we seem like a good idea.
I think so, too.
Well, to be clear, we were given a pretty clear request. The other, these other things that we might have done is not part of what we've been asked to do, and I didn't listen to or attend the supervisor meeting, so I don't quite have the context there, but what we've been asked to consider is this idea of a two-year holding period. That doesn't seem to be as complicated as some of these other things that we've brought in.
Well, I think that there's been enough discussion or concern over the two-year holding period tonight, that it may be fruitful to go ahead and have a joint meeting if you all are of mind to do that with the board in November.
What's your agenda looking like?
It's not bad.
No, we have one, what was the other one? We have a tourist home, and I can't think what else is on there for the evening, but...
Yeah, you mean, I mean, planning.
Oh, planning question.
The board's night is gonna be busy the next couple of meetings. So, it might be better to plan it for the night, is what I was getting after.
Well, we had a tentative work session date we talked about at the beginning of this meeting, which I think was originally for the birthday, but I don't know if that was something that was ever, is that just us, or is that?
I think that was just us. Initially, we talked about having a work session, but I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel, but we sent a punch list up to the board that we would like feedback on before we work on those items, so we make sure we're heading in the direction that the board members would like us to go. And I, I would, I don't feel it's fruitful to do that work until we have a course to follow.
Yeah, I brought it up simply from the standpoint of if you already have a kind of a meeting date, especially if it was just us, it doesn't, doesn't help much, but if you already had some notion of a hold on a joint work session date, but it sounds like we don't, so.
I think we do. And if we do, and not, and not this, I apologize, but it does sound like maybe we should consider inviting the board members to join us that are regularly scheduled that number meeting. Is that kind of agreeable to everyone?
Yeah.
All right, there's no business this evening. Informational item for the list of directions for the zoning ordinances from the board, there's no action on that tonight. Roundtable discussion, does anyone have anything for discussion this evening?
I believe, I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Atkins, because he's finished his classwork and is now a certified planner.
So. So, that's always nice to hear. Next regular meeting is scheduled for night number fifteen. If there's nothing else, I'd have an motion to adjourn. If you think development, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.